My name is Richard August, and I'll be your host. Our guest is Megan Riley, a candidate for the North Kingstown School Committee. Welcome back to State of the State. The last time you were here, it was several years ago as a guest.
Yes, thank you for having me back.
Why don't you tell our audience about yourself? Are you running as a Democrat, Republican, independent? Do you have children in North Kingstown Schools? What your background is? Just familiarize everybody with your background.
Sure. So my husband and I moved to North Kingstown 11 years ago. He's a Narragansett, born and raised in Narragansett. And we moved back to Rhode Island from Boston. And we have four children, three of whom are in the North Kingstown School District. I, by profession, am a teacher. And I have been subbing in the North Kingstown School District for the last two years. And I have become more and more involved over the years in my children's education and school life. And so now I'm back, and I've decided to run for school committee.
Well, the North Kingstown school system has seen a lot of problems. We've got a scandal leading to the resignation of a number of administrators, a push for diversity, equity, inclusion program, an apparent lack of concern for budgetary matters, and most notably, the resignation of several school committee members before their terms are up. So what prompts you to want to run for the school committee?
It sounds like a wonderful time to want to jump right in. But I think that's exactly why I feel obligated to get involved. I had been paying attention to what's been going on, especially since the Aaron Thomas scandal broke back in late 2021. And I slowly but surely started to look into what was going on behind the scenes at the district. I was just curious how decisions were being made. I learned all about the school committee. I had been to a few meetings in the past, but I wasn't really involved because, like most people, I was at home. I was raising my children. I was very busy with other things, and I just didn't think it was that big of a deal. And since then, I've come to realize that, in addition to being a big deal because I have children in the schools, it's also very important for all of us to know who is on our school committee because approximately 61% of our town budget, therefore our taxes, go to the district, go to the schools. And so as I started to learn more, I also started to realize that we were in, we had some problems. We were in a mess. People resigned. We had administrators resigning. We had school committee members resigning. And I just felt like it doesn't have to be this way. We can get in there, pay attention to what we need to pay attention to as school committee members, and sort of get the focus back on education and the actual roles and responsibilities that are required of the school committee members. I think there's a lot of noise going on. There's a lot of micromanaging, and there are a lot of things that are maybe more wants versus needs. I think that, at this point in our district's time, we've got to kind of start from the ground up again. We've got to rebuild after a lot of lack of trust in our leadership, and we have to get back to the basics. And I think it's more simple than people think, but it is going to take some work. We have a new superintendent, new assistant superintendent, and really a whole new administrative staff. And I think that they're working towards building our district back, but it's going to take time, and I'm willing to put in that work if people will have me.
And I think I asked you that. I'm not sure you answered. Are you running as a Democrat, Republican, or independent this time?
Yes, I'm running unaffiliated and independent, yes.
Okay. Now, the school committee is made up of five members. In North Kingstown, it's made up of five members, and they run staggered four-year terms. So three are elected one year, two years later, two get elected, and so forth going forward. But I understand there are four seats open in this election. How can there be four seats open? I mean, explain that, please.
I'll try to explain it in as basic terms as possible. In August of 2022, we had a resignation. And that was before, just per the town charter, there needed to be an appointment. But then that person who was appointed, who did get appointed about a month later, was only going to serve until the next election, which happens to be, it was too close to the 2022 election for them to put up anyone, a candidate to run. So they had to appoint, the town council members had to appoint someone. And that person's term ends in November, or I guess December of 2024 this year. Then we had two more resignations in December of 2023 and early January of this year. And both of those were also appointments. And both of those spots will be open up this coming fall. So we will need candidates to fill those spots, or the people who were appointed can also run. But they do have to run and be elected now.
Yep. So in order to stagger the terms, one of the four is only going to serve two years?
That's right. And I forgot to mention, too, that then there is an actual position, a four-year term, that is ending this year. So that's the fourth spot. So there will be a fourth spot available to be filled. And so we will have three spots available for four-year terms, and the fourth spot will only be a two-year term. So the lowest of the four vote-getters will be the two-year term.
That's pretty confusing because we have people come in here and talk about the Brankfile method and all this. I keep saying, well, that sounds good if you're talking about maybe three or four people. But what happens in a case like this where you have four seats open and you have seven or eight people that run? How do you sort that all out? But anyway, that's for another discussion. So last election, the school committee and town council, all members of which are Democrats, put a bond-issue referendum on the ballot. There were two separate bonds, one for a very expensive recreational facility, and the other was for a combination of a new middle school and a new public safety complex for the police and fire departments. Both were soundly defeated, and you are thought to be one of the leaders of the movement to defeat the bonds, and that was the purpose you were running as a guest the last time. But tell us, why were you opposed to a new middle school as a parent of, you know, school children?
Right. And in fact, my two youngest children would have benefited directly from a new middle school. They would have been in by the time it was finished. And I, as a substitute teacher, might possibly have had the chance to teach in a new middle school. I am not in any way opposed to a new middle school. The whole plan from the start was flawed, and the people involved really were not listening when residents were bringing concerns to them. Due diligence hadn't been done on properties. In fact, the plan started out by being one large middle school at the Quinnesett Elementary School site. And a few months into the project, after they had gone public with it and they had hired the architects, come to find out in June of last year, when, remember, the vote was going to be in November, they decided, or they finally listened to residents and looked into it. And I think it was like 50% of the property was wetlands, and they weren't going to be able to build the 1,200-person new consolidated middle school. So they had to pivot fairly quickly. And then it became a 900-student consolidated middle school on the existing Davisville Middle School property. So they would shut down Wickford Middle School and bring everyone over to Davisville. And then there was a lot of pushback from the community because, first of all, no one knew where this going-from-two-to-one-school came from. It kind of just appeared. I still, to this day, have no idea who really had the final say on that. The second thing is a lot of people were concerned with the travel time from the south end of town all the way over to, basically, the border of North Kingstown and East Greenwich.
At the north end.
At the north end of town, and with middle schoolers. And they wanted to, at first, they wanted it to be a fifth through eighth grade. And then, when it's currently sixth through eighth grade is middle school. And Dr. Duvva, our new superintendent, was able to push back on that and say, by September, we're going to make it only sixth through eighth grade. But you still have sixth- or eighth-graders on buses for up to an hour each way. People were really into keeping it to middle schools, the rivalry, the crosstown, you know, excitement that we've always had in our small, little communities. So there were several issues going into the plan to begin with. And then you had questions that we were persistently asking, have you done the testing on the soil? And we were pointing out that other districts had gotten themselves into some serious hot water. Newport Rogers High School is dealing with some terrible remediation problems on their soil when they went to dig, and they had to stop construction, and then they had to go back to the people and ask for more money. And there were a number of schools, and still are around the state, asking for more money because their projects went over budget. And we also felt like it was being rushed through to make the deadline so that we could get these incentives back from RIDE and the Rhode Island Department of Education. And unfortunately, we just felt like everything was so rushed. So we just were saying, we understand that some people think that we'll be saving a lot of money. But ultimately, would we be? If the plan ended up not being a good plan, how could we, how could people say with absolute certainty that we were going to save money from getting the incentives back from RIDE when, in fact, if the plan went, if we went over budget, or if anything happened to mess up the plans, we could have easily been, you know, extremely over budget? And the other thing that a lot of people don't know about this is that the Rhode Island Department of Education gives you a five-year deadline in which to finish these schools, whatever project you submit for. And you have to make every single one of those staged deadlines, and there are five stages. And if you miss any one of those deadlines, you're not getting the incentives, you're not getting the bonus money back, the reimbursements. So we were just coming from hiring a new superintendent, a new assistant superintendent. We just hired a director of finance after having gone through about four or five of them in the last few years. We just hired a permanent director of finance on March 1st of this year. So we just kept saying, let's just take our time with this. If we're going to build a new school, then let's build a new school. And I think the other piece that was missing, which was a huge problem, and still is, is what about the existing facilities? You are so focused on a new middle school, but there are eight other schools, facilities in the district that you're not putting money into to properly maintain them. In fact, we have about almost $100 million worth of deferred maintenance that we need to fund. And unfortunately, we just felt like the people in charge weren't putting any effort into telling us, how are you going to maintain the existing buildings? And when you build this new facility, what is your long-term plan so that this one doesn't become decrepit, like the high school already had so many issues that we're still sinking money into the high school? And that's our newest building. It was built in, it was opened in 2001. And already, we've had roof repairs, HVAC repairs, AC issues, and they're trying to put a new roof on it now, as we speak. And that's 23 years old. So there are just so many other issues. It wasn't just, no, we don't like children. We don't want to fund educational purposes or our buildings. And it was very easy for the opposition to say that about us, naysayers, we were detractors, we just didn't want to spend money. It's people in town who don't have children in the school district. They don't want their taxes to go up. When, in fact, it was so much more. And the amount of research I did and am continuing to do on documents and the meetings I showed up to, the meetings I listened to, you have to go back decades, even, you know, the last 10 years. If you focus on the last 10 years, and you will see how mismanaged our district has been with maintaining or the lack of maintenance on the existing buildings. And it just makes me say, how can I trust you? You're asking now. That last time, it was $167 million for one new building. But they didn't tell the public that they also have $100 million worth of deferred maintenance on existing buildings.
It's going to be the next bond.
But that is the next bond. And who's to say that in a few years from now, you're not going to come back and say, well, now this building has to be torn down, and now we need a new elementary school? So where does it end?
Well, you certainly have laid out a case because the bond issue was defeated, but I'm sure there's going to be a new one coming. If you're elected to the school committee, you will probably be dealing with it again. Now, the school system, as most people are aware that pay attention to the news, was racked by a scandal involving a coach at the North Kingstown High School accused of conducting nude fat tests on boy athletes in an unsupervised setting for a number of years. A trial date has now been set for Aaron Thomas. I'm not sure whether this is a civil or criminal action at this point, but please tell us about this matter or how you think it should have been handled when something like this comes to the, is being reported and seem to be deferred or ignored.
Well, just to be clear, the criminal case has been set. The trial is set for April of next year, 2025. There are ongoing civil lawsuits against the district and school committee members, past and present. And those dates, court dates, have not yet been set, but everything is ongoing in both civil and criminal cases. And so basically, what happened, it was in November of 2021, the story broke with WPRI did an investigative report on this because it was brought to their attention by two of the victims of Aaron Thomas, who were former students.
Alleged victims.
Alleged victims, yes, who were former students who were in, you know, adults now. And what had happened was they had gone to the authorities years prior, and that included a third alleged victim had actually gone to the administration. And between the three of them, there had been emails sent and discussions had with administrators. And the one discussion with the superintendent of schools at the time was in 2018. And then they brought in a fat testing machine. They had a conversation with the then superintendent, principal of the high school, athletic director, all those people at the time, assistant superintendent. And they decided, let's bring in a fat testing machine so that he doesn't have to physically touch the boys anymore. And that's all that was done. And by the way, that included the school committee's lawyer, the school district's attorney was in on that conversation. And that is all in the reports that were done by the independent investigator that was hired by the district. So what happened was, when the boys brought this forward and the news finally picked up on it, it was only at that point that the district came out to the public and said, yes, this had been brought to our attention. We did hire an independent investigator and an independent attorney to do a report on this. The report was brought to us in June of 2021, but nothing was done publicly. So that that teacher resigned in late June of 2021 and ended up being hired by another school, an elementary school. And he actually was working there until it was brought to that school's attention that, you know, the story broke and, oh my gosh, you know, we have to fire him, which they did immediately. What the frustration was on the part of people like me was that the administration and that the school committee members at the time in 2021 knew of that report. And I don't know what they did with it. And they, they let him resign. I mean, people keep telling me, well, they can't not let him resign. But I cannot believe that nothing could have been done. They knew, it's a small state, and it's a small, South County is small. They ended up finding out that he was going to teach at a different school. I mean, you probably could have just asked someone, hey, what's he doing now? And found out, oh, he's got a job at this new school. And it wasn't until the, we call them whistleblowers, the gentleman did something about it and finally said, fine, if you're not going to handle it, we'll go to the media, which they did. And then that's when the public started getting involved. And as more and more time went by, the school committee then, in November of that year, decided to ask for another report to be done, a follow-up report. And it was also done by that same independent attorney. And so then a second report came back. And I mean, it was hundreds of pages of, I mean, I must have read it two, three times over, both reports. And then we ended up hiring, the town council ended up hiring another independent, you know, retired judge, and she ended up doing a report as well. And they were extremely damning to the point where...
A lot of people resigned.
A lot of people resigned, superintendent, assistant superintendent. We've had so much turnover.
Took early retirement.
Director of Human Resources, so many retirements, so many resignations, including, you know, now he's on, he's going to trial. And other people have also teachers and people involved who knew and who it came out, knew, resigned. I mean, he was able to leave with documents. And the other thing is, he was the, I forget, the computer guy or the AV guy? So he was helping, having students come and tape games for him and do video classes with him. So he was in charge of a lot of recording equipment. And when he left, he was able to go back into his office and walk out with boxes of stuff.
Okay. Well, I want to talk about and get your feelings about how you would handle certain things on the school committee. As you know, in neighboring Narragansett, there's a mom who asked to see the material or learn what her child, her children were being taught, and now is being sued by the union, as a matter of fact, because she's a nuisance. But how do you see the role of parents in the school system?
Well, I absolutely see the role of parents as vital. But I think that the pendulum has swung in a negative way back the other way, where I feel like it used to be that parents weren't that involved. And I also believe COVID had a huge part in this, played a huge role in parental involvement. I think that when...
The curtain was pulled back a little bit.
Yes. When you started, now, I have been an educator my whole life. I grew up, my mother was a teacher. So I was always involved heavily with my children's education. I always knew what their homework was. I always knew what they were learning. I don't think that was true of a majority of people. Understandably, if it's not your wheelhouse, or if it's not, you know, if you have a job, you might help your children with homework, but you assume and trust that the teachers and the educators are doing the right thing by your students. And I think that, you know, when parents started looking into what their children were being sent home with, that they started to question, well, what's really going on? And, you know, there's a whole slew of things that parents learned. But to answer your question, it was a time when parents weren't as involved, and now it's the opposite. And I just think that there's this horrible now budding of heads of people. The educators feel like perhaps we, as parents, are breathing down their necks. The parents feel like the educators aren't listening to us enough, and really, at this point, never the twain shall meet, which I think is unfortunate. And I think that there are people, some people who have agendas, who are in certain positions, whichever positions they may be, who maybe stoke that fire, you know, and pour gasoline on that and just kind of make it more of a divisive issue than it really should be. I really, truly believe in our district, we can start to unify. I think there was a horrible last three years, four years, five years. But I think that with this new superintendent, who himself is a parent of four students in the district, his wife is a teacher in the district, our assistant superintendent has two children in the district, they're both NK members, community members, residents, I should say. I think we can begin to build back that trust, and I think it's already starting to be built back. The teachers seem to be, their spirits seem to be really buoyed.
Morale is improving.
Morale is improving since these new administrators came on. I think the one thing I find that's still problematic is the school committee. And I think there's still a lot of division being sown there. And I just think that that's, it's just time for a change. Perhaps it's because there were five Democrats on the school committee and five Democrats on the town council. And people like me felt like my voice wasn't heard. I would speak at public meetings, and I'd have my three minutes, and then I'd sit down, and I wouldn't get answers. I had to do the same thing, a lot of public records requests, not because I enjoyed them, but because when I was writing in, I wasn't getting responses. And to this day, I still don't get responses from many of the school committee members. And I'm almost thinking that they were, they're being directed not to answer Megan Riley. I don't know what it is.
Well, because you're, probably because you were seen as the one who stopped the bond issue for the new school.
Not just the bond, a lot of things. I'm asking questions, and I don't think that many people are used to being asked questions. And maybe some of those questions are hard. I don't know why people are afraid of questions. If you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, or if you can, if you can justify your reasoning and your actions and your decision-making process, you shouldn't back down from someone like me asking questions. But as for the parent involvement, I think that we have to heal that rift. It's a very big rift. And I know that down in South Kingstown, Narragansett, other parts of the state, even in North Kingstown, there are still people who will come out and say, oh, those nasty parents, how dare they? And then there are parents who say, why are we being vilified for wanting to know what's going on? But there is middle ground that we can reach. And I hope that as a parent of students in the district, if I do become a school committee member, I can help kind of bridge that divide. It's just, and also as an educator, I can see both sides. I'm in the schools as a substitute. I feel like I do have good knowledge of what's going on and things that need to be fixed and things that are working well. And, you know, let's just take every subject matter one step at a time and just tone down the vitriol and the screaming and the yelling, and especially the social media comments and...
Exactly.
And arguments. I mean, I can't tell you how many times I have offered to meet with people, if you want to show up at these meetings I'm holding, feel free. If I'm saying anything you disagree with or that you have found to be wrong, email me, call me, show up. And nobody takes me up on it, but they're very quick to go online.
Sure.
And shoot off about what a horrible human being I am, and, you know, they disagree with me.
You better get used to it because that's a problem with social media.
Well, I've had three solid years of preparation, which makes this easy for me. This is easy.
We're going to get running out of time, but I want to pose to you a real-world situation that I became aware of. One of the middle schools in North Kingstown, a faculty member asked the principal if the National Anthem could be played during the opening exercises, which at that point it was not, and the permission was granted. A few days later, some teachers approached the principal and requested that the Black Lives Matter song be included in opening exercises, and they were denied. If you were on the school committee, when a situation such this came up, what would, how would you react to that kind of situation?
I think the first question I would ask is, what's the policy? I mean, you always have to go back to policy, and I don't believe there's a law about that, but there is a policy. And if it's something that the school committee and the administrators want to change, there would have to be a vote to act. There isn't, we have a policy subcommittee. And in fact, the current school committee members, two of whom sit on that committee, have been blowing through the policies and changing them left and right, you know, very quickly. So I would first have to see what the policy is. I've, I actually had not heard of that situation.
I'm sure you haven't, but it really came to my attention recently.
Right, right. I'm surprised by it. But again, I guess it depends on the school protocol and the, more so the policy, not necessarily the school, because the schools themselves, each individual school, has to follow the policies of the district. And that's the point of having the policies. So as far as that, I've actually never even read a policy on that. I would have to look into it myself. And in fact, if there's not a policy, I would have to see then, you know, what protocol is. If it's one thing where if you allow one song, you have to allow another, or if the National Anthem is, you know, sacrosanct, that has to be played and nothing else does have to. So, but again, if the policy is in fact not in existence and needs to be changed, the school committee has to vote on it, and it has to be a majority vote. So it would have to be...
Maybe this policy should be, this is what's included in opening exercises, you know, and specify what it is.
Absolutely.
Because you can't, I don't think you can get in a situation of allowing different groups to come forward and say, why aren't we singing our song, you know?
Well, if I, if I can, if I may, I have a quick statement about that.
About a minute to go.
Yeah. So we're having an issue right now that, two years ago, was brought to the district, that a group wanted to fly the pride flag during the month of June, during the time when they were first, the school committee was first recognizing the pride resolution. And the then-chair at the time, who's a Democrat, who's a lawyer, actually said, I just think that we're getting into, we're opening up a can of worms, because if we allow the, the flag to fly, the pride flag in every school districts, or, I'm sorry, in every school in the district, then we would have to allow other groups to fly their flags as well. So we've already broached that subject, so it is interesting. I'm, it's, it's interesting. And so they agreed that they were going to put the resolution forth, but they weren't going to fly the flags. And that's where it ended. So this is something we'd have to look into.
Well, we want to certainly thank Megan Riley for coming on the program for a very lively discussion. We wish you the best of luck on the campaign trail.
Thank you.
And we want to urge our audience to please be aware of what's going on in your local communities, because there's so many issues that are open to local discussion, and we need people who are very involved and concerned for the community to be involved. Thank you for watching. State of the State.